I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, September 27, 2022, in the Boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook Lane, Pasadena, Texas, 5:30 p.m. Board members present, Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, welcome home.
Thank you.
Mr. Casey Phelan, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Ms. Crystal Davila, Ms. Paula Gonzalez-Fusiliere, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. No board members absent. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation tonight will be given by Mrs. Sullivan and the pledges by Mr. Phelan. Will you please stand?
Would you please bow with me? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for the many blessings of this day. We thank you for our district and for the educational aspects that it provides to every student within our district. We ask that you would ever keep us in the center of thy will in making decisions for our students and staff. We ask that you would be with leaders of our country, keep them ever mindful of the things that go on within our individual communities. We pray that you would be with those that protect our country, be ever near to them, lead and guide and direct us as we make decisions for this district. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. I have our policy update presentation by Jody Kennimer, our general counsel. Jody, thank you for preparation of the books and the...
No worries. Thank you. Good evening, board members. Tonight, you will be considering later Tasby Localized Policy Update 119. As summarized in your letter, this update included approximately about 60 different kinds of legal and local policies. About nine of those were local. The changes are all still stemming from the regular and special session from 2001, sorry, 2021, and then edits and changes to other types of administrative rules and regulations, like, for example, we're finally getting some of our records retention stuff into the electronic, you know, into the 21st century with electronics, sorry, with the ability to house and store some of those things electronically. So if there's any questions about the policies in the local update or in the Tasby Update 119, then you're welcome to ask those, and if not, I will move on to the local district update.
Anyone have any questions? Then go ahead, Jody.
Okay. So the local district update, our LDU 2022-02, includes two policies that we are proposing be adopted by the board tonight, and those are EHA and EHB. And the reason that we're adopting these policies...
EFA.
Sorry, I said that wrong, didn't I?
Yes.
EFA and EFB. And the reason that we're looking at adopting those policies tonight is because we've recently seen some confusion about what actually is an instructional material versus what are library materials, and some confusion between those two different things. And so, as you guys know, instructional materials are what we actually use to instruct students in a classroom versus books that are housed in our library collection, right, that are maintained for optional student use. And so, the development of those two policies makes those distinguish, or sorry, distinguishes between those two items, as well as the different kinds of selection and review processes and the challenge processes for those as well. We have not had any challenges to either instructional materials or library materials at this point. However, we have received a number of public information requests and just things of that nature that have, you know, they will say that they're about instructional materials, but then really, at the heart of what they're asking is library materials. So we just at least think that proactively, we need to go ahead and make this distinction before we're, you know, facing that type of issue in the district.
Totally agree. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a question, but thank you for this.
Yes.
The main thing is that we value, in our policy, library books and everything else, especially library.
Yes.
The values of our community.
Yes.
We're here to teach, not indoctrinate.
Amen.
And our community expects that. And I think this goes a long way in doing this.
Yeah, and it does specify the different kinds of selection criteria that we look at when selecting and reviewing our library materials as well as instructional...
Several reviews of it.
Yes.
So that's good to...
Yeah, and if, for example, anything is inadvertently included in that collection, then, of course, our instructional materials department and our library materials folks would look at that, and if it didn't meet our selection criteria, then they could easily remove that from a library collection where that's a little bit different of a process for instructional materials.
Thank you, Jody.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions about any of it?
I need to remind everybody that we've had a little bit of problem in recording, so make sure that when you speak, you speak directly into the microphone.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to adjourn to close session, present to Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee unless the individual who is the subject of the deliberation or hearing request a public hearing concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendation to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, nonrenewals, and terminations of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071, to consult with the district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorneys do to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We'll reconvene as close to 7:00 p.m. as we can get in here. I'm going to, we're going to reconvene in open session at 7:00 p.m., and I welcome you to the Pasadena ISD Board of Trustees meetings for September, and I'm going to ask our superintendent to kick us off with special recognition.
Well, good evening, board members and other distinguished members of our Pasadena ISD family. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize several of our Pasadena ISD students who have shown some amazing diligence and work this past summer. As you know, each of our schools, at the various grade levels, they implement a summer learning contest that were designed to keep kids engaged and active in learning throughout the summer months. Lindsay Lucneski, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will now share some of the highlights of this year's summer academic challenge, so take it away, Lindsay.
Yes, ma'am. First of all, thank you, Dr. Powell, and our school board members for recognizing these hard-working students. At each level, students were asked to participate in a variety of activities. These activities included Dream Box Math, Bean Stack Reading, Accelerated Reader, Ice Station, Coding, Research Projects, Art, Culture, and Musical Challenges, Virtual Museum Tours, Escape Rooms, and Scavenger Hunts, Pop-Up Challenges focused on the Summer FIFA World Cup, and high school students were invited to virtually visit out-of-state universities with a bonus for incoming seniors to complete the Opportunity Scholarship College list. They were very busy. These students represent the most diligent of all students who participated in those summer contests. The following students are our top performers. From elementary school, our winners are, for Ice Station, Viana Rodriguez from McMaster's Elementary. For Accelerated Reader, Alana Rivas-Lopez from Metter Elementary. Our Dream Box winner was Kim Nguyen from Stutchberry Elementary. And our Bean Stack winner was Gialle Memore from Fisher Elementary. Gialle was also our overall elementary winner for completing a lot of challenges, so congratulations to him. From middle school, first place was Abner Pollico-Maldino from Lomax Elementary, Lomax Middle School. Our second-place winner was Hector Mondragon from Milstead Middle School. From Intermediate, first place, we had a tie with Anne Kumatin from Parkview Intermediate and Alana Rodriguez from Thompson Intermediate. And in second place was Aiden De La Rosa from Thompson Intermediate. And in high school, we had a first-place three-way tie with Ashley Hernandez from CTHS, Emily Pacheco from CTHS, and John Tran from Pasadena Memorial High School. And in second place was Arastelli Vasquez from Sam Rayburn High School. I also, oops, I'll give a moment. I also want to take a moment to recognize these individuals who helped support the summer challenges. If I call your names, please stand up to be recognized. Dr. Karen Hickman, Dr. Marcia Jones, Dan Hoppy, and Rebecca Benner. Kimberly McCullough, Learning Resource Specialist from Doby 9, Mary Beth Nickel, Learning Resource Specialist from Thompson Intermediate, Dr. Tom Lee, and Pam Johnson from Advanced Academics. I also want to recognize their campus principals, assistant principals, and teachers, so please stand up for your... And, most importantly, the parents of each of these individual students, please stand up. Thank you, everyone.
Parents, none of this would be possible without your support, and we appreciate each and every one of you.
Absolutely. Well, let's keep on that theme of celebrating. We just celebrated some awesome students, but I'm going to bring Tanya Hager up here, our Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, and she is here to present regional awards to two outstanding business partners, as well as the engineering teacher from Sam Rayburn High School, who has also won an important award.
Yes, all right. Good evening, board members and Dr. Powell. As always, I appreciate just the opportunity to be here to recognize these individuals who are true champions for career and technical education. The passion that they have for CTE and their dedication to preparing our students for the future workforce sets them apart and is why they are all so deserving of this honor. So just so you know, the awards we're receiving tonight were voted on by every CTE administrator in the Gulf Coast region. So not only do we recognize the great work they are doing, but they are recognized throughout the region. So again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to honor them. Our first award goes to Toni Topping from the Texas Masonry Council. Toni serves as Executive Director and has been persistent in his work to bring career and technical education to the forefront of the Texas Masonry Council's vision. The Texas Masonry Council supports CTE programs by serving on advisory committees, arranging guest speakers, making donations, training students, and, most importantly, offering job opportunities to our graduates. This summer, they volunteered to offer a Masonry Session during our week-long Career Camp, and it was an overwhelming favorite amongst the campers. These are just a few of the examples of how they are helping to bridge the gap between school and industry in an effort to aid in the skilled labor shortage in our region. And as a result, young people are able to begin a career right after they graduate, and in turn, the industry gains a new generation of skilled and dedicated employees. So please join me once again in congratulating Toni Topping and the Texas Masonry Council for winning the Business Education Partnership Award. The next exceptional business partner I would like to recognize is Ricardo Munchaka from Merrick Brothers. Ricardo serves as a craft training superintendent and has been with Merrick Brothers for more than 20 years. He is a huge advocate for high school students across our region. He supports CTE programs by providing guest speakers, field trip opportunities, material donations, youth expos, and being an active member of advisory committees. His commitment to the construction industry and the students that he supports is evident and also essential to the development and growth of high school CTE programs. The construction industry is vital to our region, as you know, and Ricardo's purpose is to ensure the construction industry continues to prosper. So let's give Ricardo Munchaka one more round of applause, champion for CTE. I would like to conclude this evening by presenting the CTE Showcase of Excellence Award to Brock Wilson, engineering teacher at Sam Rayburn High School. Brock uses innovative and engaging instruction, as well as business and community partnerships, to empower his students to successfully transition to the global community through unique educational experiences. As an advocate of the engineering program, he has procured thousands of dollars in equipment for his students in an effort to provide the most authentic CTE experience as possible. Innovative lessons, such as a STEM-produced podcast entitled "The Rayburn STEM Cast," and a strong passion for teaching, is why Brock was named Pasadena ISD's New Teacher of the Year for the 21-22 school year. And it is for these reasons that the Engineering Pathway at Sam Rayburn High School, led by Brock Wilson, is the recipient of the Regional CTE Showcase of Excellence Award for 2022. So let's give him another round of applause. Board members and Dr. Powell, thank you again for allowing us to honor these and just for all the support that you always give career and technical education. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just have to brag on just not only Tanya and our supporters here today, but we had over 4,500 CTE, those are those industry-recognized certifications last year, and it's because of people like here tonight being recognized, teachers, supporters in the community, and of course, those experts that are helping us make that happen. So thank you very much.
At this time, if you were here to see one of these special recognitions and you would like to leave, now would be the proper time to do so. If you want to stay for the rest of the board meeting, we'd be more than happy for you too, but I think you probably have other things to do. At this time, we normally have public comments, according to Policy BED Local, related to items on the open session portion of the agenda, but tonight, there are no public comments. So we're going to move to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Moving to the Personnel section. Mr. Phelan.
Yes, Madam President, I move that we, I make the motion that we approve addenda item A and B.
Second. Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Next is, consider, oh, I'm sorry, yes, please, please introduce those.
Yes, ma'am. Just going to blow right past that. Ms. Yadi King, are you here? Ms. Yadi King is being considered for the position of Counselor of South Houston High Do you have any friends, family, guests, loved ones you'd like to introduce?
I have my sons with me.
That's right.
Jacob and Connor King, both of which have actually attended Pasadena, so I'm very happy to be back home.
Fantastic. Welcome to the family. Ms. Kathleen Freeman? There you are. Hello. Ms. Kathleen Freeman is being considered for the PIMS Coordinator position. Friends or family here with you?
We say congratulations to each of you, and certainly, we know we can expect wonderful things. Thank you.
Do you want to sneak in?
Yeah, if you would like to leave at this point in time, you're welcome to do that as well, so it's totally up to you. Okay, we're going to move, there's both certified personnel and support personnel is for information only, but I skipped. Consideration of possible approval to enter into an interlocal agreement with University of Houston, Region 4, U.S. Prep, and Pasadena ISD for Texas Strategic Staffing Planning for Paid Student/Teacher Residence.
I'll move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Moving to the Educational section. Accountability 2022 Spotlight, and this is Donna Summers.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board. It's a pleasure to be with you, as always, and just to give you a little update on what's going on in Pasadena and the state of Texas. So this, again, is our Accountability Update. It's going to be STAR, CC Mar, a little bit of graduation, and some STAR redesigns, so you know what's going on in the bigger picture as we look at data this coming year. One big celebration we could not move forward without, so what this data is showing you is three years of information of STAR reading at Mead's Great Level Performance. The blue lines are where we were in 2019, pre-COVID. The red lines are where we were post-COVID in 2021, and then the green ones are where we ended up in 2022. So you can see, in all but one grade level, we exceeded pre-COVID performance, so that's great for all of our students and teachers. When we look at the same thing for math, we don't see quite the same growth. However, several studies have been done recently, and more are coming, about the impact of COVID on instruction and on learning, and they are seeing nationwide that math is just taking a little longer to come back. And some of that, if you just think about what kids were doing at home, they were still listening, they were still speaking, they were reading, they were doing some writing. Very few of them were sitting at the table doing math. So while some things continued in the world of literacy, not as much continued in the world of math. So that is not just a Pasadena thing that we're seeing, it's a nationwide thing, but we're also seeing a lot of growth in that area and expect to catch up rather quickly. Another thing, talking about growth, that we really want to celebrate, is that on the student growth domain, specifically for accountability, we had an A rating for Pasadena ISD. So that's another fun, fun moment of growth. And one more celebration before we move on, we had our tie for an all-time-high graduation rate of 90.9%. Looking kind of what we'll see next year, our college and career military readiness in 2019, pre-COVID, had an all-time high of 65%. Post-COVID, we had several things going on, so for all the certifications that we just heard about, they were not able to get their hours in on COVID years, so we really had two years where that was a challenge for them. It was the end of 2019, 2020, and the beginning of 2020, 2021. Another difference that we had across those years is that colleges are not all requiring college entrance exams anymore for enrollment. That was a significant change that came with COVID, I think you all saw it on the news, but some of the colleges have kept that. So some students who may have spent a lot of money to study for those exams to make sure that they were going to get what they needed to, we're not necessarily seeing that in 2020 and 2021. However, the estimate of what we will see again in the future coming in 2022 is right back at 65%. So we are coming back with a bang, it looks like. This one, this is just to show you, when we talk about college career military readiness, there are several different ways that the state gives you credit for college career military readiness. So this is just breaking some things down. We had 3,883 graduates. Of those graduates, 2,012 of them were deemed college career military ready. And those green boxes show you if they got it on an IEP, and that means they graduated workforce-ready out of a special education program, then we had 163 of those. On this particular year, remember, it was a low year because this was 2021, we only had 352 industry certifications, but that has far been exceeded what we were seeing, what Tanya was just talking about from 2022. That remains, 1,558 students who, in one way, shape, or form, had some sort of college entrance exam or an exam to earn college and career military readiness, and that's still where we're earning the most of them, between SAT, ACT, dual credit, and advanced placement. So the majority of our students are still getting college and career military readiness off of some sort of exam, but we have a growing, growing, growing number getting it from their industry-based certifications as well. Another indicator we wanted to talk about, and it is not in accountability yet, but maybe soon, and this is the percent who are enrolling in college in the fall immediately after high school, and we had been averaging about 54%. You see the dip in 2020, but then you see the 11% increase in 2021. And not only is that a wonderful increase, but we think it's also a testament to the partnership with San Justin College and San Justin Promise, so we're already seeing great things coming out of that. To wrap up state accountability, and we will still have our annual report as required in February, but just as a wrap-up for now, Pasadena ISD's overall score was a B, it was an 86, and that's exactly what we had pre-COVID. So we came back without any dip at all in our accountability scores. We had 11 campuses with an A, 38 with a B, 13 with a C, and two that have not yet achieved post-COVID targets, but are well on their way as well. We ended up with 124 distinctions at 41 campuses. And what a distinction tells us is, when I think about a single campus, let's say I'm Jessup Elementary, they go across the state of Texas and find the 40 campuses most like Jessup Elementary and see if you ranked in the top 10 of things in that 40. So it really is a good match to see where we're landing, and what this is telling us is that 41 of our, 41 of our campuses were doing very well compared to other campuses just like them across the entire state of Texas. So that's a wonderful achievement. Just an odd note about accountability, which I really didn't realize until I went back and tracked, in 20, hang on, I'm going to not forget it, 1980, 2017, I think, when was Harvey? 2017, we had Harvey, no accountability. 2018, we still had something that was going on and we didn't have accountability. 2019, we had accountability. 2020, we didn't, and 2021, we didn't. So in five years, we've only had two years where they could even actually calculate accountability. And I just thought that was interesting, that we've had so much going on in the area, and that doesn't count the freeze or the fires that were in some of those other years. So our students and our teachers have seen some very critical issues and are still performing very well, and we've been looking at those for five years now, so maybe a normal... very well, and we've been looking at those for five years now, so maybe a normal year will come soon. Maybe. Wait a minute, sorry. Sorry. All right, so accountability, what are we looking at in the future? The Commissioner decided that every five years, we're going to reset, but the good side of that is that things don't change for five years either. And some of the ideas they're looking at, nothing is in stone, it's still all very draft, but they're looking at changing the district calculation, instead of treating it like a campus, it would be a weighted average of all the campuses combined, instead of it being its own separate identity. Domain 3 is one that looks at 14 different student groups, they're looking at narrowing that down so that we can keep our focus on the students that are most in need in some of those areas. And the biggest one is that all the targets that decide how accountability will run are all being recalculated, and they haven't decided exactly which year they're going to use as baseline, whether it's going to be pre-COVID, post-COVID, how far post-COVID, all of that is still to be determined. So there'll be a lot of information, I'm sure, coming through TASB and TASSA and all those areas about the new system. The biggest impact is from STAR, STAR is changing. As you know, they've been waiting to go online for a while, and this is the year. So in theory, everybody will be online when we test in May, which will have some challenges of its own. The other thing is that they are redesigning STAR, so it is not a completely multiple-choice assessment anymore. Because of all those changes, there'll be no progress. So all that wonderful progress we're making, we will still be able to see it in our interim assessments that we give, but you won't see it in accountability like you have in the past, because they're on a one-year hold on progress while they measure exams. The other two impacts is that it's going to delay all of our STAR scores likely until August of 2023. So we normally get them in June or late June, we're not expecting them until August this coming year, and that will delay our ratings until this time next year, in late September. So just to give you an idea of how these redesigns are going to go, and this is nothing new for our teachers or our campuses, these are the kinds of tests teachers have been giving for a long time, the state's just decided they need to test, like kids are learning and kids are being tested in the classroom to be closer aligned. There are 14 different new ways they are going to test, which is what this list gives you, but I thought I would just highlight a few of them. So the first one is called drag and drop, and this is in lieu of a multiple-choice exam. So in this drag and drop example, there are six answer choices, which you see right here, the 28, 10, 3, 32, 9, and 2. And the students would drop their correct answers into the squares over on the right. So this is what's called drag and drop, and they will have that in multiple grade levels and multiple subjects. I believe this one was a third-grade exam. This is a fifth-grade exam, and in this one, they do graphing. So the students will look at the X-axis and the Y-axis, and they would actually drop in these little dots, I had already done it, but what they would be doing is finding that spot and clicking to get the dot to show up to graph it correctly.
Did you get it right?
I did get it right, thank you. And then I double-checked it before I got here. And the last one, this is a science question, this is a hotspot, so you're clicking on things to show the answer, you're clicking on certain sections. So this one says, which examples in the image demonstrate inherited traits, and you click the two that you believe are the right answers. So we have a horse pulling a wagon, a farmer driving a tractor, a dog walking on a leash, a student reading a book, a mouse blending with the ground, and a chicken clucking.
Do you all know the answers?
Chicken.
The chickens clucking is one of them, and the mouse blending in is the other one, yes. So that's just some examples of what we'll see in the future, but also explains why they can't compare one year's start of the next, because they've had a complete redesign, which is why we won't see progress, and the other reason that things are coming in so late.
What grade is this?
This one's fifth-grade science. This was the easiest fifth-grade science question, there were others. Yes, ma'am.
Donna, did I hear you say that we wouldn't have individual schools recognized in this?
I think when you were talking about the district being weighted, not by just the school.
Right, yeah, the district score right now, they treat it like a campus, so they take all the scores from all the kids and just calculate it like it was its own single campus. But now the campuses will all get their own score, but the district will be weighted based on their scores.
All right.
You're welcome.
That's confusing.
Anybody else?
Good information.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great information, thank you, Donna, for putting this together for us. Okay, now we have Professional Development 2022 Spotlight, and that is Tracy Goodman.
There's no easy way to just, oh, this isn't my presentation anymore, here I am. All right, there's no easy way to just do it real quickly, but I'm super glad to be here tonight to get to talk about our professional development. It's fun to follow Donna, because I also have good news, and I think probably one of the reasons that we've been getting those successful scores relates to the training that our staff members are getting. So I just want to cover a few things from the last 14 months. So my report goes from June of 2021 through August of this year, 2022. One of the most important things that we're focusing on in the district is our new teacher onboarding, because we want all of our staff members, all staff members in all areas to be trained. But when we get a new staff member, someone who is an induction year teacher, we know, we keep hearing in the news and everywhere about teacher shortages and the competition between school districts, and we want to make sure that our training for our first-year teachers is top-notch, so that we can not only attract and hire those great teachers, but that also that we can retain them. So this is an important part of our, of our professional development program, and it's going to, I'm going to focus on it some during the presentation. So first, I want us to look at the 12 months, this is, I said we were going to talk about 14 months, but I want us to just look at the 12 months of the 2122 school year. So I wanted to let you know that we are back, we are back to getting professional development. We had a couple of rough years there with COVID, figuring out new ways to do things, but during last school year, wanted to draw your attention to, we actually offered 5,103 courses, and during the school year, that's a phenomenal number of courses. And this is training, we, we always talk about professional development being for teachers, but this is also includes our training for our bus drivers, our nurses, our crossing guards, our police officers. Everyone is getting job-invented training, as well as training to become even better and more efficient at their jobs. So of those 5,000 courses, of course, multiple people attended multiple trainings, and if you look at that number in attendance, we have 531,781 people that attended trainings. Now, I figured that out, and it's like, most people attended an average of 66 trainings during the school year, last year, during this 12-month period, that's, that's pretty significant. If you look at the green of those courses, we had 76 courses that were devoted just to those induction year teachers that I was talking about. These are not just new to Pasadena teachers, but new to teaching teachers. So we had 76 courses just aimed at them, and with an attendance of 1,576.
Tracy, let me stop you one second. Were these, were these online as well as in person?
Yes, this is, these are our E-courses, and some of them, full disclosure, some of them are ju, oop, well, dropped an earring. Some of them are, and Lord knows where. So some of them are just mandatory training that we have to do, you know, we're given all these compliance-based trainings, but, and then some of them are actual face-to-face at the Rosco or in the summer, you know, and then some are school-based courses, and some are just virtual courses that they took.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. So now I want to talk just about this past summer, the summer of returning. This is where we have been very excited, this best summer we've had in three years. This summer alone, in this three-month period from June 1st to August 31st, we offered to our teachers 2,462 courses that they could take during the summer. You know, we, we mostly want to train people in the summer when they're fresh, when we're not taking them out of classrooms, or making them stay after school, after they've worked all day, et cetera. So we offered 2,000 courses, so if you put that with the other courses that I mentioned for the other 12 months, we offered about 7,500 courses. So, and in the summer alone, we had 469,000-plus people attend. So that's, that's really, really excellent numbers. We are actually maxing out on tons of our courses. Now, when we look at the new teachers, those there in the purple, we offered, we offered three courses repeatedly all summer, we offered them four times during the summer, once per month, twice in August. And so, I apologize, twice in July. Those three courses that are getting our new to, new to teaching teachers ready are Classroom Management, First Days of School, and the Rise Technology Academy, which that academy teaches them how to use every one of the wonderful platforms we have here in the district of the learning platforms. So when they walk in, they know how to check roll, they know how to do all of the different programs that they're required to do, and not overwhelmed by that. All right, now, we noticed something, though. We noticed that this slide is a little bit different. Last year, during last school year, we had 338 new, new teachers, new to teaching teachers. And in the pink, we had 434 individuals, okay, that we only counted their name once, 434 individuals that attended training for our new teachers. So this, of course, caused a pause for us, how could we have almost 100 more people attend than were new? That's kind of odd. Well, what we found out is that a lot of our veteran teachers that maybe just aren't feeling as strong in a skill set are coming to our trainings for our new teachers, because they're like, I'm a mentor, and my mentee knows more than me about whatever, you know, the technology platforms. So we're getting some of our very experienced teachers, just this week, I've had two principals call me and say, can I send a teacher to one of your new, new teacher trainings? I was like, absolutely, so that's awesome.
It is.
That's great.
All right, but when we, when we talk about training, we're training everybody, like I said, crossing guards, teachers, everybody. But one of the things that this year, that Dr. Powell, and Dr. Stallings, and Tony Lopez have really been doing this past year was looking at our leadership definition. How do you show that you're a leader? How do you portray those leadership skills, no matter what your job is? And so they, they partnered with the Holesworth Center to develop, of course, our, our leadership description, which got us thinking in curriculum and instruction about, well, what are we doing to make sure that we are keeping our bench of people ready as we are training, we're training them to be great teachers, rock star police officers, whatever it is we're training them to do, but then what are we doing to get the bench ready for when there are eventually promotions, retirements, whatever? And we have six things that really, that we're doing continuously to keep our, just our bench loaded with rock stars. So we, our PLCs are professional learning communities, that every school has their professional learning communities, but we also have an emerging teacher leader. These are rock star teachers that someone said, hey, I've noticed you're awesome, and we're going to give you some additional training so you can be a teacher leader among your peers. We also have the Teacher Leader Collaborative. Principals select people to go through this training to, again, be able to serve as that role model to other teachers. We have our Aspiring Administrator and Counselor Academy. Now, this academy is specifically focused on our people that are, already have their master's degree, they're already fully certified to be an administrator, assistant principal, or specialist, or whatever, and our counselors that are already fully certified. We want to know who they are, we want to give them all the training in the Pasadena way, so that then they can just go and excel right away. And I get to work with those, those, that group, as well as Karen McCarley, she and I are the ones that work primarily with that group. We have our Aspiring Campus Coach Academy. Many of those emerging teacher leaders, and those that participate in the Teacher Leader Collaborative, want to go on to coach other teachers. So Dr. Scott Harrell works with them with the Aspiring Campus Coach Academy. And then I believe it was last year that Melissa Rippey started the Aspiring Librarians Academy. Let's get rock stars in every single, in every single seat, so we are sure that our future is secure as well. So, we didn't forget our leaders, though. So I talked about everybody else, then our, then our bench going to these new jobs, but we're also training our leaders. This summer alone, we, we had many different initiatives for our sending leaders. We had, of course, our conscious discipline training, we had a, a session about what principals need to know about coaching, and brought in some well-known speakers, better conversations training, we encourage our, our leaders to go to the TPSA or the TASSP conference, we even held our ASCDs even coordinated, having our own Pasadena ISD Leadership Conference right here, where we used a lot of our different leaders to teach different things to our current leaders. So we're always learning, we get AD going on, threat assessment, I mean, lots and lots of things, lots and lots of ongoing initiatives, and continued training for our leaders. And, so, but this year, and this is, I believe, one of your action items tonight, this year TASB has suggested, required, that now, this is a change for this year, that our school board approve our professional development plan, you know, we, we go through a process to determine our professional development plan and what areas we need to focus on, and now you guys are going to get an opportunity to approve what we have planned, and I, I just went to, I'm glad to pass this around, I didn't, I wanted to save resources, this is our catalog for the fall, this is all the courses we have ready for this fall, and if anybody would like to see that, I will be glad to share it with you. You have any questions for me? Oh, look, here's my earring.
Oh, good.
That was my question.
Ms. Sullivan?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In the past, we've had Principals Academy, and under what you have furnished us today, is the Principals Academy going to be replaced with Aspiring Administrators and Counselors Academy?
No, the Leadership Conference took the place of the Principal Academy. We still have, we still have all these other initiatives, like grading from the inside out, and all those types of initiatives, they're a separate time, but the Leadership Conference, the Pasadena ISD Leadership Conference, took the place of the Principal Academy.
Principals that are sitting in here know, they get instructional leadership, they get ad council, they would probably tell you they get more than enough training. Some days it feels like a whole, whole lot, but there's definitely lots of opportunities.
So we can mark that, Principal Academy off. We don't have it anymore.
So we did a Leadership Conference, and we did Leadership 101 for our assistant principals, so there are some new names. It's, it's the same concepts, but we've changed the names of it.
Yeah. One other part to that question. When we hire... When we hire or we name principals, have they all completed this particular course?
The Aspiring Administrator Academy? That is not a requirement. It is certainly a pipeline, but it is not a requirement.
Didn't we have a requirement for Aspiring, for Principal Academy in the past?
I believe the principals are required, they're not required to go through Aspiring Administrators, but they are required to do many of these initiatives every summer. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Tracy.
Yes.
Do you have somebody else?
No.
Go ahead, Marshall. Why don't you tell everybody what RISC is? What does it stand for?
Oh, Retaining Instructors Through Support and Education. That's what RISE stands for.
You reached some press on that, did you not?
We did. We were written up in the TASP magazine, focused on our RISE program. We presented at the Midwinter Conference in January. And then, we were, Pasadena is doing such a great job retaining our teachers and training our teachers that they asked if they could do an article on us. And so, we're really excited about that.
Okay, Kenny, you had a question?
The professional development, what does that cost? The teacher or leadership? What does that cost?
Well, our teachers that work in this school district do not pay for those trainings.
I knew the answer, I just wanted you to say.
Oh, our teachers?
Because that's part of a recruiting tool that, you know, going to these conferences that we go to, we hear it all the time. What, you guys put that cost on the district and not on the teachers? I mean, they're just amazed and blown away by it and, you know, probably looking at us saying, "Well, that's why you retain your teachers, because we know how to treat our teachers." So, I just, I wanted to put that out there.
Thank you for the publicity.
Thank you, Tracy. Anybody else have any questions? Did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
So, let's move to consideration of possible approval of the Pasadena Independent School District Professional Development Plan for the 2022-2023 school year.
So moved.
Whoa. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. I know, I just couldn't figure out Phelan or Sullivan. So, any discussion? No discussion, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval to authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with case debate as part of Harris County Department of Education, HCDE, and Pasadena ISD, specifically Pasadena High School and Dobie High School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion?
So, board members, you have previously approved for Dobie High School and Pasadena High School would like to be part of this program as well. It's an outstanding opportunity for them. So, this would just give me the opportunity, since the copy of the contract is not here yet, to execute that when it does come to us. So, it's just adding a PHS.
Any other, or any questions at all? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the 2022-2023 21st Century Community Learning Centers, Cycle 10, Year 5, Continuation Grant Award in the amount of $1,500,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliar. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. That's a great, great thing for our district.
That's our final year for that one. So, Olivia's gearing up and Gloria to go for it again.
Y'all doing an awesome job. But you already know that. Okay, next is consideration of possible approval of the 2022-2023 Dollar General Literacy Foundation Grant Awards in the amount of $8,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries.
That's another one of those grants. I'm denied, yeah.
Consideration and possible approval of the 2022-2023 Texas Education for Homeless Children and Youth Continuation Grant Award in the amount of $123,970.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2022-2023 State of Texas Office of the Governor Bullet-Resistant Shield Grant Resolution in the amount of $172,277.55.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2022 congressionally-directed award earmark in the amount of $2 million.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of 2022-2023 Environmental Defense Fund Grant Awards in the amount of $18,750 and corresponding EDF grant agreements.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
How will the 200 students be selected?
So, this is at three of our high schools. So, I don't know if, Becky, if you want to talk about how the students are selected or if we know. I see Ms. Winkie looking over there to her teacher, like, "Come on up to, come on down." You had no idea, did you? You look great and you look confident. How would the students be selected? Out of what class?
So, we just recruit them all over campus. I'm actually, this is my first year doing it. Dr. Ferguson at Pasadena has been doing it for many years. He actually takes the kids on a Big Ben camping trip in the spring. So, that's a really big recruitment for our, for this program.
Thank you. You did great.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries.
I've talked to Olivia before we start tonight. But if you look at items five through 10.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
The job that your department does and the people that work with you on these grants, you guys are just super people and you're superstars.
Yes, you are. Thank you, Marshall.
As we were going through this, that maybe we could have the number of grant items somewhere in our book because every meeting, we have grants and it would not be possible without Olivia's department.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Consideration and possible approval of Sam Rayburn High School Band to travel to Sulfur, Louisiana to compete in the Sulfur Marching Festival, Saturday, November 5th, 2022.
So moved.
Was that you, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez or Hernandez or whatever his name is. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in...
Awesome band director back there, Mr. Embry.
Okay, Mr. Embry, stand up so we can say hello. Thank you.
I think they'll come back a winner. While these people are playing, I'll let you know. They look great out there at football games. You're doing a great job.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. We know you're going to take good care of those kids and those kids are going to make us proud.
Now you can go to bed.
Consideration and possible approval of Bondi Intermediates 8th Grade U.S. History Students to travel to Washington, D.C. and New York City from March 9th, 2023 through March 15th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
I have a comment. My daughter went on this last year and was blessed to have Ms. Lee go with them and their staff or some of the people with them. And she had an absolute great time. I did this when I was at Dobie with the Closer Program. This is a great opportunity for these kids. And I applaud you for starting this and continuing to go with this. I appreciate it.
It's something that they'll never forget.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter is here as well with Ms. Lee.
Awesome. We appreciate y'all, yes. So, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. And we know you're going to take good care of those kids and they're going to come back with memories forever.
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Consideration and possible approval of VW Miller Intermediates 8th Grade U.S. History Students to travel to Washington, D.C. from March 10th, 2023 through March 13th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries.
We have our principal and teacher here as well from Miller.
Awesome.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so we pulled, the superintendent's pulled item number 14.
It was a repeat of the Rayburn Band Troop.
Okay, got it. Moving to student achievements. This is for information only, but you'll notice in your board book, all of the student achievements, the fire prevention poster advancements, the Pasadena Livestock Show and Rodeo Cook-Off winners, Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo School Art, Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo Graphic Design. We do a great job. Y'all do a great job with our kids. And, you know, they're the direct beneficiaries of all you do and we thank you for everything that you do. Going to move to the policy section. We have, we had policy presentation early in the meeting. So, I'm going to defer to Ms. Sullivan. Do you have a motion about the policy?
I move that we approve the policy as permitted our legal individual.
Let's do...
Ms. Kenemeyer earlier in the...
Okay. First, we're going to consider and possible adoption of TASP Localized Policy Update 119 affecting the local policies designated on the sheet that we received earlier.
So moved.
Okay. I think Ms. Sullivan made the motion. You want to second that motion?
Does she need to read it off just like you read it?
No, no. I just read it, so that's sufficient. Anyway, all in favor, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible adoption of Local District Update 2022.02 affecting EFA Local and EFB Local. Ms. Sullivan?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion?
I want to thank Jody because this is a massive undertaking. I don't think any one individual without the legal expertise that she has would be able to put this in the form that's so easy for us to decipher. Do you have anything to add to that?
I would just say thank you, but it is a huge effort by a lot of different folks. I have great staff that helped me put this together. And Cabinet also takes, you know, the policy drafts that are for their specific areas and goes back to their teams and reviews those before we bring them forward. So, it is definitely a massive group effort and not just a Jody show.
It's like herding cats, though, honestly.
We do appreciate it.
Diana's very good at herding cats, so I am grateful to have her.
Y'all do a great job of presenting and making us understand some of the legal...
Thank you.
So, thank you so much. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Moving to the financial section. Consideration and possible approval of the 2022 appraisal rule.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of resolution concerning PISD 457, Voluntary Retirement Savings Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
This is just adding Mr. Poppy to our list of, of course, officers authorized.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of designation of investment officers. Is this what you're talking about?
Same thing, both.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion? Was I right?
Kendrick.
Oh, Kendrick, I'm sorry. Y'all are going to have to kick me. Anyway, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Now, we're going to move to the operations section. Consideration and possible approval of construction contracts with Romeo Music for the auditorium lighting and sound upgrade projects included in the 2022 bond program in the total amount of $2,548,332.
So moved.
Second.
That was Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
I noticed that all the high schools are in and then we put Beverly Hills. Is that because we have the auditorium the size of the original?
Right. So, it was one of the large auditoriums because it did house the former Dobie High School. And we have a lot of events there, not only campus events, but district-wide events, PD, various performances, community use of that auditorium as well.
It's so great that we could use that school.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion?
Where's this company out of?
Dallas.
I take it that this is their forte, this is what they do.
Do you want to come up to the mic? Sorry, Michael.
We don't usually get this, the lighting piece of it, so tell me a little bit about this company.
Kevin can also talk, but there were four companies that submitted bids and then we narrowed it down to two, correct? And then, this was the better deal for our bang for our buck. Like, the equipment was better, the amount of lighting instruments, the amount of sound instruments, just the amount of microphones was way better than the other companies.
And they're well-known in the industry. Other districts have used them. Those were also consideration.
And we've used them, I don't know, for probably 15 years.
Oh, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of a design services agreement to Texas IBI Group, Inc. for the 2022 bond program roof replacement package project in the amount of $607,033.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. I'm sorry, I'm... Any discussion?
So, our project architect is here, Mr. Louis Fernandez with IBI. So, just want to make sure you're aware he's here tonight.
Thank you for being here.
And thank you for getting that last name right.
What last name?
Fernandez.
You weren't even on the list. I've called for discussion. Any discussion? I don't think there was any. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of an HVAC testing and air balancing tab services agreement to National Precision Air LLC[1782.12] Agreement to National Precision Air LLC for the LM HVAC Upgrades Group 1 Project in the amount of $25,200.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. whatever his name is. Fernandez. Hernandez, Fernandez, whatever. Any discussion? That's an inside joke.
Yes, it is.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Kevin?
Yes.
Has this company done work for us before?
They have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, Number 35, for the new Thompson Intermediate Replacement Project in the amount of $165,796.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, Number 37, for the new Thompson Intermediate Replacement Project in the amount of $66,601.
So, move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, Number 38, for the new Thompson Intermediate Replacement Project in the amount of $565,304.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of Allowance Expenditure Authorization, AEA, Number 39,